And thank you for attending this extraordinary meeting of the Education, Children and Families Policy Committee. I'd like to take this opportunity to wish you all a Happy New Year in person, although we are already halfway through the first month of the year, so I don't know where that time has gone. So the meeting today is open to the public, but there are no items on the agenda that are exempt of any information. The meeting will be webcast and a recording will also be available for people to watch later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. We haven't received any public questions or statements for the meeting. And please can I request that mobile phones and other such equipment are switched to silence so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today, so if the alarm does go off, the evacuation in towards Tudor Square, and please follow members of staff from the town hall. I'd like to ask each member of the committee to introduce themselves, and this time I'll go this way.
I am councillor Hayby for Brumhill in Shrewell.
Malacca Hayby.
I'm councillor Ted Mallinson in Hillsborough.
I'm councillor Anne Whittaker, West Echelfield Ward.
I'm councillor Rebecca Atkinson, Durrantotley Ward.
I'm councillor Mohamed Mary with Grace Park Ward.
I'm councillor Nidat Bishara, Netheredge and Sherrill Ward.
I'm councillor Rob Anister, Grace Park Ward.
I'm councillor Talibusen Van Gooft Ward.
Thank you, I'm councillor Dawn Dale for Shagrin and Brightside Board and Chair of this committee today. I haven't received any apologies for absence from members, do we have any apologies from officers? Rachel?
Thank you, Chair, just that Meredith is not here today, and Sally is here in her place, thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. And as I said before, there are no exclusions of public and press, as there is no exact information in the files today. Could I ask if any members wish to declare an interest in any of the items on today's agenda? I'll take silence as I know, thank you very much. So item number four is the public agenda related to questions and statements, but we don't have any public questions or statements. So now we'll go to item number five on page 11 of your agenda pack, which is the work programme, and Rachel Marshall will be presenting today, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The work programme is laid out from page 13 of the main agenda pack, if you do want to leave or scroll, if you're looking at it electronically. On page, just looking now, page 16 at the top there, you can see the proposed additions and amendments since the last meeting, they're laid out quite clearly, so any changes will be obvious on there. From page 19, you will be able to see the tables which clearly lay out for the forthcoming meetings ahead, what's planned, what's scheduled, and the details of those. They're open for the committee to discuss, and the committee can also make any recommendations for things to be added. So I'll pass back to Chair now for that to be open for discussion, thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Have we got any questions, comments, or information to add into the work programme at this meeting? No, not at this time. Oh, councillor Mallinson.
It's just, just to make sure it's not forgotten really, the all age mental health strategy, the all age autism strategy, and the transitions strategy, I think we're going to the Adults Committee, and we obviously, I think there has been some discussion about how we're going to manage that, because obviously children has a really important voice in that, and clearly sorting out problems at an early stage means that they don't carry on into adulthood, which is what we need, and so those strategies need to very much cater for the younger age group, and there needs to be a lot of involvement. So hopefully those plans are going to be in place, thank you.
Thank you councillor Mallinson. That will be added on to the work programme, these papers had already been published when we'd had that discussion. Just for everyone's information, work has been going across directories, has been ongoing with children's and adult services with regards to transitions and all age mental health surveys, and some others, members are sat on some of those boards, but officers are definitely working across directories, but we will get that on our work programme to come to this committee, thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to item number six, which is on page 23, and that is the Belonging Framework and the Voice of the Child, and we've got Pat Buttrill and Chelsea Renahan presenting today, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, members of the committee, thank you for allowing me to present this important paper today. At its heart, this paper is about belonging, a principle that must be the foundation of everything we do for children and young people in Sheffield. The Belonging Framework provides us with a shared lens to guide our decisions, shape our relationships, and frame our actions. Every child should belong in a loving family, a good quality home, in their local school where they feel belong, and thrive, and attain, in their local community where they are valued and respected, and a member of the city of Sheffield where their voice is heard and they can see the impact of the voice of their decisions. This framework helps us move beyond policies and strategies as isolated concepts, ensuring that our work reflects a strong child-centred and value-based approach. It unites us across sectors under a shared commitment to improving outcomes for children and young people rooted in collaboration, empathy, and the courage to do the right thing. Through this framework, we are re-engineering the system to focus on relational practice, designing and delivering with children and families, not just for them. We aim to co-produce and consult meaningfully, ensuring that collective actions are guided by their needs, aspirations, and voices. Our children and young people have helped shape this framework through their I statements, which align with Sheffield City Goals. These statements articulate their vision of belonging, whether it's feeling safe in their communities, accessing enriching opportunities, or knowing that they have trusted adults to turn to. The framework's alignment with citywide strategies and outcomes ensures that belonging isn't just an abstract ideal, it's a tangible reality embedded in housing, education, employment, safety, many more. It reinforces our commitment to being a city that listens, adapts, and evolves with its young citizens at its centre. By adopting this framework, we are committing to embedding a child-centred approach across the council and the city, creating an environment where every child belongs, thrives, and is valued. This isn't just about our children, it's about shaping Sheffield as a city that is inclusive, compassionate, forward-thinking for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Chelsea, have you got anything you wish to add at this point?
I think we can take questions and then...
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments? I have a few comments, but councillor Whittaker.
When we looked at this before, we were talking about the consultation, can you just give a bit more detail of what that involves, the consultation? So who did you consult with? I know it's, you know, children and young people, but where did you go and find those children, in what areas were those children, and how many consultations were there? How did that work out basically?
Sure. So for this initial piece of work, it is an iterative process, recognising that obviously young people grow up and move on, so there's that continued cyclical dialogue that we need to have with our young residents in the city, and with our children of all ages. So for this initial piece, we know young people don't like to be over consulted about the same thing, so what we decided to do was take, use a timeframe of the last 18 months, and take any and all consultations that we've done, from Bright Spot surveys with young people with care experience, and within social care, all the way through to Make Your Mark campaign, which is a national consultation, we've had 5,000 young people from the city involved in that, through to themes that came from the youth cabinet elections, which involved 12,000 young people, and then everything and anything in between, which, it could have been groups of 15, or groups of up to 273 of local consultations through LAX, or through, for example, perinatal support, perinatal mental health support, violence against women and girls. We've taken all of those consultations that we've done with young people, and we reviewed them extensively and consolidated the key themes that were coming through from all of those consultations. It was approximately 15,000 pieces of raw data, and that is where we drew the insights and information to create and align what young people were telling us in relation to the city goals. As we build on this piece of work, like Pat said, this isn't a standard piece of work, it is a developmental and iterative process, so as we build this, we will work with our young people through our youth voice and influence processes, and our children's involvement processes, and making sure that we're working with wider organisations, and particularly our voluntary stakeholders, to involve young people in the further design, and also more proactivity of how we can embed this in a real tangible way in practice, and how we can encourage others to take on board this feedback. So for what you've got today, that is how we've built that, we don't want to over consult young people unnecessarily, we want to respect that feedback, that is what we've been asked to do, and that's how we've built what you've got today.
So, I mean, you haven't mentioned, were schools involved in this, or would that have been considered over consulting?
So, no, no, that's not considered over consulting, so the 12,000 and the 5,000 consultations, so the Make Your Mark and the Youth Cabinet, they were delivered through schools, so that's where that will come from, and that's from primary school age as well.
Thank you, Chelsea. I think for me, we've been talking about belonging for a really long time now, and it's really nice to be able to see this actually really starting to sprout some blossom, some buds really. This is the beginning of the process. I think what I've been really drawn to is some of the I statements from the young people, which are really, really important, and the link from this framework to our next item, which is our community safeguarding strategy, and how that will link across the city with our partners and the voice of our young children. And there are a few, this is a really good, a really good document, I find, I'm very sort of practical, and it's nice to be able to see where the Belonging Framework links in with all of the different strategies that we're working on across all directories in the council, so this is not just about us and children's being mindful of this, but as you say, in housing, in parks and leisure, in highways, you know, we have to have children at the heart of everything and every policy decision that we make in Sheffield, and it is really important that we do that. And I'd just like to say that by adopting this proposal, we're not only acknowledging the importance of children and young residents in Sheffield in shaping policy, but we're also committing to a citywide culture where our children and young residents are valued, are heard, and are part of the decision-making within our city. And I can't wait to start seeing this become more embedded in communities as well, so you know, if we look at city goals number five, which I've written down, supporting children when their environment means that they are at risk, and also how that links back to our community safeguarding strategy is really high up on our agenda, and that's one of the key themes I think that's pulled out from it, what our children have also said to us, they want to make sure, and we want to make sure, that they're safe. I'm just looking forward to embedding these two papers that are coming today into working practice along across the city with our partners. So thank you to everyone for this, for all of the work that's gone into it, all of the partnership work that's starting to develop across the city, I just think it's really important. So it's more of a thank you and a comment from me rather than a question, because I have lots of opportunities to ask lots of questions, and I've done throughout this process, I'm sure you're all aware of that. So yeah, councillor Bashra.
I think I'll just echo what Dawn said, when I first heard about this, I was very, very excited from the work that you've been doing and sharing, but I was looking forward to welcoming this, because a lot of the stuff that we hear as councillors as well, and just generally in the community, I think this will definitely tackle all those leads as well. My only one question, is this the awareness obviously to all the schools is already out there, that there is going to be this being there project?
Yes, I mean, the real awareness of the paper, obviously, but also I think we discussed belonging, I think the first conversation I had about belonging was when I started my role back in September last year, meeting with head teachers down in Langley and Sheffield, you know, we are, heads will talk about belonging in their schools, nationally belonging is a term that's kind of coming into the educational sphere, and certainly within Sheffield, it's feedback that I'm getting from head teachers that is aligning how they feel about their own individual schools, and how those schools fit into a more citywide context as well, so it's kind of aligning the thoughts within the individual schools, and in some cases trusts, and how that kind of drops into how we think and operate and value young people as a city.
Say, well done, and thank you, I think it's that trust and rapport through this is going to be very strong as well, thank you.
If I could just ask actually a real question this time, this is sort of us looking at approving the belonging statement and supporting the I statements, and looking at approving how we review, how we engage with our children and young residents. As this is an iterative process, will this come back? Is this an opportunity for us as this grows, and as we get an understanding of how it's becoming so embedded in schools, but also embedded in voluntary and community sector, you know, in other spaces across the city? Can we get it to come back with an update?
Yeah, so we've got, obviously Pat's just mentioned about the work that we're doing with schools, and how we're working alongside head teachers, and in the schools' framework, if you like, in the communities' context, and with our voluntary sector partners, or essentially our deliverers, our community deliverers, and with young people in communities. What this does is it provides us with three opportunities, so first of all, and I'm not going to go into detail today on this, but I will make a subtle reference, because it's for a different time, but we are in the process of establishing a Sheffield Youth Alliance, which brings us all together to reflect a youth space, essentially mirroring the art, if you like, of the city goals, and having a city vision for the youth sector. We're very much committed to wanting to have that framework sitting there, and what that means, that is in its infancy, which is why we're not going to go into detail today. Equally, when we're working with our partners, either through training, through mentoring and support directly on site, or through our youth grants process, we can talk about the belonging I statements, what that means, how we can work with young people. And then finally, we talk about iterative, but iterative is also consultative, it's a dialogue with young people, and we do have young people already looking at this with their views of how they want to navigate it themselves and develop it, so we have young people who want to explore using animation like we've done in the past to articulate what belonging means, and use that to articulate to peers like yourselves, and explain in a more creative way how they feel they belong in the city, and that can be used developmentally. We have our Send In Voices group, we have 32 young people with special educational needs and disabilities, they actually have views on the word belonging, and they understand this, and they're quite passionate about this framework, but they also want it to be recognised that the, sometimes there can be an adverse power of belonging, and us recognising that and giving feedback on that, and what it means to feel acceptance, so us taking that on board. But by creating this initial space in this statement, and then applying it into our strategies, that offers us a very live, immediate, tangible, you said we did space, because people, our young people, our young residents, our children will see our work in action whilst we develop this continued dialogue with young people.
Pat?
I just want to add to this, that I think, you know, belonging has always existed in cities, and in environments, and in communities, but I think what this has given us is a bit of a lens to recognise our strengths as a city as well, and our practices as a local authority, and as children's services, so did a recent event where we kind of looked at belonging as a kind of recognising some great practice that told the story about a young person, I won't go into at this point in time, of how bringing belonging and bringing that kind of relational approach solves problems, creates an environment, makes children happy in the environment they're in, and I think it's just allows us to bring that focused lens on what we do, and actually celebrate what we do, and how we perform and manage what we do in many cases as well, so it just gives us that kind of specific lens.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you, I think what you should see moving forward is the Belonging Framework being key to everything that we're doing, so in terms of any work, any policies and documents, the Belonging Framework and us creating children's services where children absolutely belong in the city has got to be central to everything we're doing, so it is just about, for yourself as members, about that challenge to ourselves as well, that this is what you should be seeing moving forward in everything that we're doing, and absolutely challenge as if that's not what you feel our work is focused on.
Thank you, Sally. councillor Whittaker.
Before, when you mentioned the voluntary sector, I might have missed it, but are youth clubs that are run by volunteers, will they be offered training in this?
So once we've developed this into a space where that sort of training package exists, it's absolutely, at the moment, I would say that where it is now is where it needs to be, which is a dialogue, and understanding the nuances within that, you know, when we talk about belonging, and we talk about belonging in communities, that's obviously, we know that that's not just geographical communities, that's also cultural communities, spaces, families, neighbourhoods, things like that, so I think it's understanding where we're having those conversations and how, and then what that means for those organisations delivering. I would suggest that we've also got a lot to learn from our voluntary partners around belonging, as much as we've got to train, in terms of the practicality, so I think it'll be a reciprocal process of how we roll this out, and I think that's absolutely essential to our commitment to a more collaborative youth sector, children's sector.
When this was first brought to committee, I thought it was quite a simple concept, because I kind of grew up in the 60s, and I've got memories now of feeling like I belong to my family, I belong to my school, I belong to the area I lived in, I belong to my group of friends, and it seemed a sort of natural process, but clearly it's not, is it? And it will be for some people, but not for everybody, and I think it is, it's so important for a child's development and everything, and how they see the world, isn't it? So yeah, so thank you for all the work that's gone into this, I think really interesting to see how it pans out, thank you.
Yeah, I think I'd agree, I think we all operate as adults best when we feel like we belong, and we're safe, and we're comfortable, and we're happy in that space. We can't take that for granted, that every child or young person in the city feels like that, so I think it has to be central to our decision-making processes, but also the way that we operate, the way that we relate to each other, the way that we are as officers in the council as well, it's so important to us.
Thank you. I think, again, what Sally had said about the challenge is really important, I think the framework is just that, it is a framework, and then the strategies will sit beneath that, within that framework, I understand, so for us as members, it's about understanding what we're actually expecting to, how are we, because this is relationships, this is not something you can kind of measure through statistics and number crunching, this is about how people feel, this is about how people's lived, about people's lived experiences. So I think what will be interesting is when we start to see the benefits of this in, with our young people, when they start to feel, I mean, some of them already feel like they belong, but there may be some, that actually when we start to embed this into services and across the city, I'm trying to ask, how are we going to know that we've cracked it? And what will the challenge be within each policy? I think that's probably the bit that I need to understand more, is how do we challenge if we don't know what we're to be challenging, and how are we going to know that what we're doing is working?
I think the nuance of this is crucial, but I think you'll know when we're not acting in the spirit of belonging as well. I think, you know, we're in a space where we'll start when we know that that isn't in the spirit, and that is where we all need to be challenged, when we know, when we see this as not a feeling like the people of the city don't belong, the young people don't belong, that decision doesn't look like belonging's at the centre of it, where it happens is a little bit more nuanced, and a little, you know, it's harder to measure, but it's much easier to spot when it's not happening, I think my response would be to that.
Thank you. Sally?
I think just bringing you back to how we'll know it's working is the point about the Belonging Framework, and we've got several strategies that sits under, and that will keep developing, but just going back to one of the statements that's in the Belonging Framework, that about every child should belong in a loving family, good quality home, the local school, so things about how we're going to see it's working, is we're going to have children in the communities, in the homes, and in the local schools, so some of those key indicators, we know that we do measure, and the Belonging Framework is about ensuring that children thrive in those areas, so that's going to be how we can see things are working.
That's fabulous, thank you. Pat, did you want to come again?
Just coming back on that, so things like school attendance are a sign of belonging, children in their local schools are a sign of belonging, so there's plenty of metrics to measure alongside this, but I think the most obvious one, when challenged, is when it's in its absence.
Thanks, Chelsea.
I think more tangibly around youth voice, we have things like the Bright Spot Survey for young people, who are care experienced within the city council as community parents. I think we also have, like we said before, the Make Your Mark Survey, which is delivered by, or was delivered by British Youth Council, and will be undertaken by, we think, the National Youth Agency in taking on their work, and obviously we have our youth cabinets and things like that. One of the key actions of the youth strategy, when it was agreed in 2022, was to undertake a young resident survey, and we were about to do that, but we actually held off on that, knowing that we do have some voluntary sector partners who are really keen to engage in a collaborative approach in undertaking that work, and do have some support from donors in order to get the best analytics from that. So it's those kinds of activities that we want to undertake as well. Again, I'm not going to go into huge details about the Youth Alliance, but one thing that we can say is that we are undertaking a significant mapping exercise with the National Centre of Youth Impact, which is about to be undertaken over the next three months to understand the state of the youth sector, and that includes feedback from young people and from providers. So once we consolidate all of this information, whilst that might not give us a yes, we belong, or no, we belong right now, it'll certainly give us a really substantial baseline to then build on, and know what we're asking in the future.
That's great, thank you, Chelsea. So are there any other questions or comments on this item on the agenda? Councillor Hasse.
Thank you, Chair. You've got two tiered strategies, have you got any priority, tier one or tier two to implement?
Sorry, I think that was probably in a paper from before, understanding the tier one and tier two strategies, so it's like the city goals and the council plan, and then can you just explain, we did kind of ask for this to be explained to us, so in the papers, for anybody who's watching and has not seen the papers, it says underneath the, within the framework, what our strategies are, and whether they are tier one or tier two strategies, so can you just explain briefly what that actually means?
So to be as sort of succinct as I can be, so the idea is that tier one are our higher level documents that feed into the more corporate level work that we're doing, so for example, the city goals, the council plan, things like that, and making sure that actually our young people are embedded within that. Tier two is our more strategic, but with an operational eye, strategies that where there's space for accountability, discharging our statutory duties in a more operational way, but again with that strategic approach, and then you may get delivery plans or action plans that then will sit underneath that, which is absolutely that operational approach of a service.
Thank you, councillor Mallinson.
Thank you, obviously a lot of work going into this, and I don't want to put a fly in the ointment slightly, but we're going to be looking at the SEND Self-Evaluation Form later on, and that's got a graph in it that shows exclusions in secondary going from 46 in 2021, in a straight line up to 145 in 2024, which, you know, that's clearly showing some... some dysfunction in the secondary education system arguably, which hopefully this strategy can can get, start to address. And so that straight line going up can stop going up and start coming down again. I don't know if you can address what's happening in secondary school exclusions and how this strategy would address it?
Yeah, thank you. I think we've got this coming on a a paper coming to committee regarding secondary, well, the whole alternative provision, exclusion and everything. So I mean, you could, I think the thing is, it's not as simple as there being a dysfunction in secondary school system. I think there's a societal issue with regards to lots of different underlying reasons why we've got. And I know you are doing a lot of work. So if you wanted to touch on it briefly, Pat, but what I would suggest is don't go fully into the work because there's a lot of work going on in this area and we can bring that paper. It is coming to committee, I think. So when's it coming? Yeah, when's it coming? April? In April. So but let's have a quick update on that. Thanks.
I won't go into into detail. And yeah, we've completely understood. We've seen the trajectory, we're working with the trajectory. I think engaging the conversation with the school sector is crucial, that it's a joint approach. It's certainly not a finger wagging approach, but with the context of a belonging framework behind us that we all agree on civically, this is not just a local authority issue, this is, we believe in belonging, having that context to underline those discussions with schools about how we approach exclusions, suspensions, how we look at solutions within our communities and within our schools. It gives us the backdrop, it gives us a gives us a language to use when we're having those conversations. The strategies, we won't go into at this point in time, but it certainly gives us the approach and the language. And I think it's a shared language that's coming through schools now. The approaches will follow, but the the language certainly feels like we're in the right space. Hopefully, the data will follow.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, so on, but we can get a briefing before it comes to committee anyway on all issues around this sort of thing. We can have an all-member briefing, an all-committee briefing, so we can definitely have an update. Can we get, can we make a note of that, that we would like an update for all committee on inclusion rather than exclusion? It'd be nice, wouldn't it? Thank you. So on this item then, we are being asked to approve the belonging statement and support the I statement and to approve to review how we engage with our children to hear their voice and ensure they belong. I need to take a vote on this. Are we all happy to approve this document? That's great. Thank you very much. That's been approved. Thank you. So we now move on to agenda item number seven, which is our Community Safeguarding Strategy and Action Plan. And we've got Chelsea Renahan and Becky Towell over presenting this paper. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. So thank you. And I hope you've had a chance to 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 read the document that we're proposing. So what it is that we're proposing is the continued development of Sheffield's Community Safeguarding Strategy for 25 to 28. It'll be a replacement of Sheffield's current contextual safeguarding strategy. It is a development on what we currently deliver. So it's going further beyond the focus of exploitation. It's looking at contextual safeguarding in its widest lens. It's looking at what you might see as an acronym as ROTH, which is risk outside of the home or harm outside of the home. And essentially, what we've just discussed, it's providing young people and children in the city with safe, supportive environments where they can thrive and belong. One of the things that we know from from research nationally is that whilst we all understand and we we think straight away, we think young people, we go, we think schools, but actually, young people spend 85% of their waking hours in their local communities or outside of school. And what we need to do is make sure that actually that space is safe, that it's alert and that it's providing positive and engaging spaces, places to be, and trusted adults in those spaces. In in what we're proposing, we're looking at by prioritising early intervention, trauma-informed practice and community resilience, the strategy will aim to protect children from harm outside the home and support their development and support their developments in positive ways and their relationships with with their communities as well. We want to respond and the strategy does respond in at the moment. And as we build it, it will continue to respond to our challenges in youth crime, school exclusions and high rates of young people not in education, employment or training, tackling risks that are listed in this. So I won't, I won't go through an exhaustive list, but beyond child and criminal exploitation, but actually looking at peer-on-peer harm, looking at locations being risks, knowing that online is also a location. And we need to understand that more. We need to be able to respond to that better. And what does that mean? Looking at spaces young people go in terms of commercial spaces. So where do they go to socialise in town? Where do they go to socialise in their local communities? And that might be businesses or forms of transport. We're already implementing a number of initiatives to test and concept test, if you like, across the city. So there are some examples within the paper that we've that we've given, but we've we've got examples across the city in different ways of how this can work. So working with businesses, we're doing some work with parents, we're doing some work with young people in terms of peer leadership. And we've also been doing and delivering training in schools, including primary schools. So we're looking at this strategy actually focusing on young people, children, young people from the age of eight, knowing that if we get there at the earliest opportunity, we can have the best possible intervention. Fundamentally, what we want to offer is a really proactive and coordinated approach, multi-agency approach to harm outside of the home or community safeguarding. So that's one of the priorities within the strategy. And then additionally to that, it is it is important to share our knowledge with our communities and to make sure that we do have that collaborative relationship, that trust, that shared trust with our communities and being able to offer where often harm outside of the home can be actually quite scary, not just for young people who are experiencing it or the families and parents who are experiencing harm outside the home and watching their children, young people go through it. But actually also when communities witness it, actually, do I report something? Am I at risk if I report something? So helping our our communities, our business partners, our young people, our parents, family, schools, helping them to be able to, first of all, identify and understand what harm outside of the home is, and then also understand how to respond safe in a way that they feel safe and confident. So we, as a city, we become more proactive in keeping our young people safe. I think finally, one of the things that we want to make sure, I've already mentioned that we want to make sure it is it is a trauma-informed offer, recognising parents, guardians and communities as partners, knowing that they will experience traumatic, or they will, they will experience trauma, secondary trauma, vicarious trauma. So making sure that we've got the skills and the knowledge to to recognise that and to respond to that. And to give you another example of how we've been trying to work with our workforce, we were able to deliver training to 140 staff before Christmas on secondary and vicarious trauma with an international renowned expert in the field. So for this meeting, we're seeking the agreement to move forwards with the work that we're doing, the proposed timetable to make sure that we've got quality stakeholder engagement and that that is that that is real dialogue that we're having and that it's honest and authentic. So we can really understand how we can work closely with all partners, including our community sector, but also residents within the community and and the development of the strategic vision.
Thank you, Chelsea. Any questions or comments on this one? councillor Haby?
Thank you. I just want to say firstly, thank you for bringing this. It's extremely important, I think. And I see that the strategy is from 25, 2025 to 2028. So I appreciate all the work that's been put in there. Quickly, I know you said we're going to have a briefing on what Toby mentioned, but I do know that we're approving this for the next three years. So I thought I'd highlight some areas that I think that has been mentioned because it aligns with the needs of children with SEND holistically. And it discusses broader terms of safeguarding, but I don't think there's anything specific, not to be too anecdotal. But I work with the Mothers Group for Autism every fortnight on a Friday. And one of the mothers said, I wish I knew how to identify special educational needs in my children younger. So my, because if I was able to do that then, my oldest son wouldn't be in prison. The reason I'm bringing that up specifically, and I think it needs to be highlighted, is the government released two papers, one in March 2024, that said, children with identified special educational needs are seven times more likely, at least seven times more likely to be expelled or excluded. And then only three months ago, they mentioned that children with SEND are more likely to be internally trafficked and exploited. And I think with those two papers only coming out last year on the findings, I think we need to find a way to highlight this specifically. So for example, in section 2.4, we could put, we can expand in the key risk and areas of focus to make it a targeted offer. So the strats, for example, the strategy will address the disproportionate risk of SEN children being excluded from school, targeted for exploitation or entering the youth justice system by ensuring early intervention. I know early intervention was mentioned, but this makes it more specific to SEN. By the way, you can hear my voice, I've had way too much coffee today, so I've got the jitters. It's not nervousness, I promise. We've been in here so many times. And that's why I went to the toilet. Anyways, back to what I was saying. Another another piece of data that was released recently was young offender institutions. And the Centre for Justice Innovation realised that staff often lack proper training. And I think there's also links to that item beforehand as well, where if you want people to belong, we also have to pick up the weight to make them belong. So if you think of it as a journey, if they're seven times more likely at least to be excluded, then they are excluded and they don't have that targeted support or that early intervention, then they're sent to youth offenders institutions. Then it's still not picked up there and the staff and training isn't there. We're setting ourselves up to fail. So my main point is just to focus on the SEND. I know, you know, the briefings, but we're going to approve this, I think it should be on there. There was another thing that I wanted to mention. Let me find it in two seconds. Yes. In the proactive and preventive, I think that's at 2.3, we need to put something training educators and community workers to identify children with SEND. I know it's, I know it's hard and not everyone's trained. I know people spend years getting the qualifications to do this. But if there's some sort of floating organisation or anything that can go into these organisations and support, or parents can come in, I think it'd be much better to not to offer a lot of them. But yeah, could we have something a bit more targeted?
Thank you, councillor Haby. I think, I know quite a lot of people have got their hands up and want to speak on this. I think what we are approving today is the development of this strategy. So we can add things in, it will be an iterative. We are going to do lots of consultation with yourselves as members, but also with voluntary and community sector organisations, schools, parents. I think there's not the, and which is why I have asked for the briefing for all members of the council, not just our committee members. Because I do know that there is a lot of work going on in communities actually, where we do have a team that go out to work with parents to identify exploitation in particular. But I do know that we run, out in communities, we run autism support groups and all sorts of stuff. So it might be better if we can have that information available to us. That would be would be really good, wouldn't it? But if I can let Sally come in first and then Chelsea. And I think some questions might actually probably be for people over in education that might be feeding into this strategy as well. So Sally?
Thank you for that. I think what's really key to development of the strategy and all work we do is that acknowledgement, not just of SEN, but that intersectionality. So about the different deprivation, other issues around maybe SEN or school exclusions, hidden disabilities. So when we're looking at strategy and that development of strategy, there's so many different vulnerabilities and it's making sure that we're clear and taking everything into account. And one of the things that we've intentionally done with this strategy is when we've put about different areas that is not an exhaustive list, because things change so rapidly about what risks are, what different forms of exploitation and harm outside the home are, as well do all the the different individual issues for children and young people. And I know Chelsea's really committed in terms of the work, in terms of the training, that it's identification of all needs and parents, families, schools, whoever's working with children, just need those different tools to be able to offer that right support. So but absolutely, I think it's a really key point. And as councillor Dale has said, it links into some of the other policies. So the work that's going, that Pat will be bringing in April, it's just making sure that we have got all these policies linked up and the work linked up.
councillor Haby?
Thank you. That was quite comprehensive. So I appreciate you letting me know that. I'm also very aware with budget pressures and the conversation we had around EHCPs and that support for SEN is going to be so much tighter that the holes in the net are going to get bigger. So the reason I also would like this to be more specific is we're going to struggle more than ever to support these children, which means that we need to also increase our support in this sector of things, if you know what I mean. That's that's why I believe it should be. I'm not, I'm not saying that there's different, you know, intersections that need more priority. I'm just aware, holistically, over the whole, last year that we discussed, SEN is becoming a more prevalent issue in our city. And if they are seven times, seven times more likely or more likely to be exploited, we should throw something in there targeted. That's targeted to that specifically.
Yeah, I'm going to let Pat come in on that because he's education hat on.
Thank you. I've just been chatting to Rose over there in the background, we've been discussing this. I think you're right, resourcing is tight. I don't think this is just about resourcing. Linking back to identification of needs, I think the primary need in Sheffield is speech, language and communication, particularly for the younger people and actually probably as as we're going through, but it it can, it it shows in different ways as these young people get older. So it's described as a social, emotional, mental health issue by the time they get 13, 14 and the obvious impact of that on safety, wellbeing, et cetera. So there's a hell of a lot of work taking place at the moment in trying to describe healthy child development before we actually look at where we implement that. So Learn Sheffield are working on what they're calling the SEND manifesto at the moment. Part of that work is describing that healthy child development. We know as a city, we under diagnose, under represent speech, language and communication. The numbers are that we see are probably under representative of what we should be expecting to see of a city of our size and the needs of the city. So the work is going into that and it's going to be, you know, it's long-term focused work. So that's where the energy is going at the moment. And yes, the EHCPs are part, a really important part of kind of supporting a young person's education through. But we're also looking at how we can support in the mainstream without anything additional. Okay, and we'll we'll take additional, but it doesn't necessarily take the resource and the financial resource that the HCP brings with it, but how we can actually meet it at much earlier need in the mainstream setting, back to the Belonging Framework where a child goes to its local school wherever possible. So I suppose it's kind of, yes, the resourcing is tight, but also it's how we approach the resourcing and how we meet the need at its earliest point.
Oh, gosh, everybody's sticking out like that. So Chelsea, do you just want to come back and answer that question? And then I've got councillor Atkinson and councillor Murray.
I think it'd be helpful to say, yeah, we we absolutely recognise and the 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 reports and the research that you mentioned, the articles you mentioned, we're absolutely aware of. And it is something that we do need to build in in terms of how we are recognising vulnerable groups, but still also maintaining that position that we also recognise that developmentally and generationally, young people's needs are continually changing. And we need to, we need to make sure that this document remains current. I think it will probably give you some confidence that one of the examples that we're using and one of the priorities within within the work that we're doing in terms of the sort of community youth sector is we absolutely recognise the set needs of young people and making sure that we are future-proofing our communities for our young people. So we've, we've got initiatives where we're doing that. One of the examples in this context that would be really valuable is we are piloting a digital right the way through One of the examples in this context that would be really valuable is we are piloting a digital right the way through to face-to-face engagement. Youth clubs specifically for neurodivergent people with neurodiverse youth workers who have had youth work training. And um are, they engage young people where they're at in very different ways, online, using a really um closed space. That has been built and designed for Sheffield. Um, and then they work with our own youth workers as well as themselves to arrange meet-ups um in the summer holidays. They'll try, if young people want, you know, it's about building meaningful friendships and healthy friendships. Um, and that can then take them into their own local youth clubs with the youth services that we are providing more locally. Um, to try and build and expand trusted and positive relationships in trusted and positive spaces that we want to achieve within the aims of the strategy. So it does, it does, it does intend to build on that dialogue. It's not there yet because we want to understand it more, but that's an example of how we are um recognising that as a, as a space to develop.
Thank you. Councillor Atkinson. Um, yeah, just very, um, just very quickly, um, I think it is clear that you have, um, you've mentioned send intersectionality. Um, I think for, for me, um, these are inter, sort of internal risks. And the other, and two point four, you've um talked about external risk factors. So that's kind of how I see it and I hope it makes sense to me. Um, what would be interesting to see um as part of this is how these risks interact, the internal and the ex, and how they interact. Um, and, um, yeah, sort of, you know, maybe children that have send needs versus um. Issues in terms of intersectionality or, um, it's, you know, poverty or differences in backgrounds. What, how those risks um present in terms of the external risks and which ones are they more exposed to depending um on those internal risks? I think it'd be quite interesting to, to know and have that, you know, sort of laid out.
So one of the things that we're doing in our information advice and guidance service is um for those young people who, uh, we know are neat. But are not ready even for, to work with an advisor, they're working with um our opportunities developments officer. Using a youth work approach and group work approach, um, to ju, just to look at themselves, personal development, confidence, experiences, some exposure to new experiences. So trips and visits and things like that. Um, and what we're doing within that is we're using a tool called, um, it's, it's quite as simple and it, it's, it's, it's an age tool, it's been around a, a long time. But it's, it's um quite trusted, certainly I trust it, um, a tool called the outcome star, where young people can identify where they're at. And then each week, they will, they will identify how that moves and what that means for them. And that should give us an idea, we, we have performance dashboards for each of our services and that will give us an idea of, um, actually in that space. What would that look like as a cohort in terms of the bigger picture of this work, understanding that the vulnerabilities of those groups, like you mentioned earlier. Um, and, and by having these interventions and creating these relationships with trusted adults and safe spaces. What does that mean in the bigger picture of the work and the impact? So we can certainly track it.
Thank you, Chelsea. Can I just ask if Pat or Sally can just give a bit of an overview of the SAFE. Um, project that Learn Sheffield have been doing, which does exactly that and it tracks children's, um. That might be, that helps to identify children that might be at risk or through, so for the, our, our side of the home. Based on their experience and their lives.
Um, yeah, um, so the SAFE project is a D F E funded project. And actually, I think the funding has come to an end this academic year, last year. So we just, um, Learn Sheffield took on the commission for the SAFE project. The idea, I'll give you kind of a potted kind of background of it, is schools identified those young people that are at risk of falling into either criminality. Or antisocial behaviour, they identified a number of students. Learn Sheffield coordinated this, so certain organisations were commissioned to deliver in this space. So certain community organisations were commissioned to deliver in this space. You put me on the spot now, I think Sheffield Wednesday were one of the organisations, there were various different organisations within that space. And this was done over a three-year programme. So on a practical level, in a school, that looked like some young people coming out of certain classes. Or some, some young people that weren't going into school, coming into school to work one-to-one or in very small group work. Or in some cases, going out of school into those community organisations to work on those skills. And those were very different organisations, so the work that Sheffield Wednesday, for instance, did was, could be very different to others. Um, Learn Sheffield are just in the process of finishing their evaluation of that. Um, and that's something we could certainly update during the briefing through the evaluation. Um, one of the outcomes of it, and it's, it's a difficult thing to evaluate as in, for where, you know, you can't predict not going into. And things like that, but some of the hard evidence was coming back that things like attendance improved with interactions in schools. Uh, suspensions certainly improved wi, within that. Um, the ana, the voice of the child feedback was something that struck me when I went through the informal evaluation. With, with Learn Sheffield just before Christmas, um, and they're looking at ways of kind of developing, developing that going forward. Through their evaluation of alternative provision within schools. So there's a lot of learning taken from the work of this SAFE task force. Uh, I've probably not described it as well as some other colleagues who would describe it in this situation, but um, yeah, that's the SAFE task force.
Thank you, and that's just one element of the work that is, and I think it's kind of not in, in this, but we do know there is a lot, which I will bring councillor Marouf in with his question. But I think this is the point of the, we're going to go back to all member briefing, I think it's trying to set out for members to understand that. All of the layers of work that are taking part within, not just within the council, but the importance of the partnership that is also taking place. So when we talk about safeguarding, it's everyone's responsibility, so we do work across partnerships. So how do we identify risk and then how do we put the services into place? And all those intersectionalities that you mentioned, you know, that, that are part of that, whether that be a teacher, a voluntary and community sector frontline worker. And how do we identify that? That would be part of an update at that briefing, so as members can understand. What the journey of a child looks like if someone's concerned that they're at risk. Uh, councillor Marouf, did you have a question?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you, Chair. Um, I mean, it's an excellent report, I've been following it through for a number of years, as Dawn has. And I'm very pleased that it's coming forward as a, as a policy now, and it's a very topical issue as well. And a lot of the things that you're raising are, are obviously very, very topical. And I think councillor, uh, uh, Malachi has just raised a little bit earlier. It's not until they become a reality and become something on the, on the news that we really start to investigate, what, what did we have in place? And how did we address those situations? And we see it quite regularly on, uh, in news reports, how lots of local authorities across the country have been failing on a number of things. I'm not going to pick on anything in particular, but some of the, all the topics you raised there, they've always had a case behind it. The, the question I want to ask is two, twofold. One is, um, and I think, uh, Malachi has asked that already, but I'll, I'll reiterate it, is, is the finance. Because that seems to be a, a, a common answer that comes back the other way. We would have picked this up, but we didn't have enough resources to actually pick it up. And it's for us as members to be aware, if there is an issue around finance, because it's, it's all, all very well, having all this report and the way it's written. It's brilliant, we've got that in place, but if we can't implement it and can't deliver on it, then it's just words in, in, in my opinion. I'm just trying to be straight about this because I know people out there will be reading this thinking, we've got all this in place. But I know it's a, it's a process where we, we build upon. So that's, that's, that's one aspect of my question, and it's something for members to be aware of. If we need to support this financially, then we, we should be able to champion this for you. Uh, and the second one is, um, there's a lot of subjects that you raised there, is there an actual, uh, if I was to ask you just one question? Yeah, it, it, gang culture, for, for instance, is there a gang culture in Sheffield that we're not aware of? Because I don't see it, but is there something, a surprise that'll come later on? I'm just using that as an example, because you're far closer to this than we ever will be. But as members, we need to be aware of the realities of what's out there and what's likely to come to us on the unsanitised version of it.
Thank you. I think I'm going to let Sally answer, answer that, those questions, if that's all right, to start with. And then if you feel, Chelsea, that Sally's missed anything, if you want to jump in, thanks.
Um, so just in terms of the initial part of the question about the work that's ongoing, about financial resources. Absolutely, um, there is budget constraints and we know that there's budget constraints. But in Sheffield, for a long time, we've prioritised as work with, um, children and young people. We've seen impacts, um, uh, we've got, um, the children's set later on in agenda about what our early intervention work does in Sheffield. And that includes issues around, um, harm outside the home. Um, so all the spectrum of issues in our early intervention. So we've already got a really strong commitment and really effective work in that arena. Um, but then working with partner agencies, within children's services, within council and externally. Um, there is a lot of services we can do, um, better with this strategy and one of the aims of this strategy. Is making sure everything's more joined up and that people know how to access what support and what services there is. Um, so we do do well. You can see from some of the impacts and from the external scrutiny that we've had in terms of us working in this arena. Um, that it's been, um, positively recognised about what impacts that we're having on, on lives of children, young people in the city. Um, I think going back to, to Ofsted in twenty twenty-three, um, it was particularly recognised there and quite scrutinised. Um, but then on to the second part of your question, Sheffield is a core city and there's a multitude of issues. We've not got a wall round protecting us from outside influences. So as society changes, as risks change, and, and one of the reasons why we've not been so specific in this strategy about what the risks are. Things do change and there is, um, different forms of, of offending behaviour, criminal behaviour, all sorts of things within the city. What we want to do and what we're working hard to do is get as far downstream as we, we can. Um, to stop children, young people being involved, and that's about all the different services that, that we've got, um, and working with partners. Um. But in terms of the, the assurance that there's, there's, there's no offending, no any different cultures in the city. It is something that's changing and that's just about us working with our partners.
Thanks, Sally. Did you want to add anything, Chelsea? No? Okay. Uh, councillor Marouf?
No, thank, thank you for that, that's, that's definitely reassuring. But I think if any member here, um, will, will bear me out on this, whenever we go on the doorsteps, everybody, oh, the young people hanging around here, they're hanging around there. Uh, they're, they're causing damage here, is that just something that they? It, it, it exists out there, and I was just trying to get to the point whether, how, how we intervene in that sort of position.
I'm sure Chelsea can answer this far better than I can, but for me, this goes way back to belonging framework. And this is a cultural shift, and this is about children and young citizens feeling that they belong within their community. And there's some intergenerational work to be done and there's some myth busting to be done also. Like Sally said, we can't say that in Sheffield there are no issues, but sometimes issues are sensationalised. And I think sometimes people read a lot of social media and they get caught up in the fear provoking element of things. Where actually people then become more fearful than may be necessary within their own community. So I think what we do is we, we adultify our children really early on, so we treat them as criminals and we treat them as adults. Um, and, and expect them to behave in a certain way without actually, um, offering them safe spaces to be able to do that role modelling and that mentoring. Um, so I think it is a very complex answer to a very complex question, because it will depend on the children, young people and the community in which you serve. But there is a thing I find, I work in communities, as does councillor Hebert and many of us do. Where, you know, when you speak to some people, they say there's a gang on Endet Road, well, there isn't actually, there's a group of young people. Who are just kind of hanging around and chilling with their friends and they're having a bit of mischief on the way home from school and calling in to a chip shop or whatever. So I think we do need to look at, across the city and with our partners, look at how we talk about young people in, in Sheffield. And how we make them feel more valued, make them feel like they're not being criminalised for, you know, you're quite often in meetings, I see in meetings. We talk about A S B and criminal activity and they are two very different things. So antisocial behaviour is very different from criminal activity. And I think we've gone down a bit of a rabbit hole where we kind of need to roll that back, work with our young people. And as leaders in our communities, really speak more positively and celebrate the good things that our young people do. Quite often the headlines and most like social media sites or, or, um, or media outlets are only ever report on young people if it's something really bad. And rightly so, people need to know. But what we need to is we need to flip that and actually start reporting on all the really good stuff that a lot of our citizens, young people, young citizens in Sheffield are actually achieving. And committing to, in my, my community, we have young people that go out and litter pick on their own, you know, let's celebrate that sort of stuff and let's start rebuilding our communities. Sorry councillor Marouf, you've got me on my soapbox there, but I will defend, you know, our young citizens, the.
So you let me come back now?
Yeah, I'll let you come back, but I don't know if Chelsea just wanted to come in and then councillor Basra, but.
No, no, it's all, it's all very positive.
Okay, so Chelsea, did you want to just correct me if I'm wrong?
No, no, definitely not wrong, definitely not arguing that. But I think, um, I think one of the, one of the real sort of beauties of it, it's, we can talk about home outside the home and it can make us quite fearful. One of the real opportunities and something that's really, really positive that comes out of a strategy like this. Is exactly what the phrase we use, which is trusted adults in relationships. And creating dialogue with communities, so not just community organisations, but actually the people on the doorstep. Um, in and sharing our knowledge, so not being the professionals that go in and fix things, but actually building that trust and that dialogue. Um, and sharing our knowledge with, with the doorstep, if you like to use that phrase. Um, so that actually, you, people know that if you see young people roughhousing, that's part of adolescence, that's not antisocial. Um, it just happens to be on, in a park or on a bus stop. There are things like littering and whatnot, but which again is part of adolescence and that's where, where youth work comes in. We work together with the sector, uh, to look at how we use the youth work curriculum to support our young people to develop and grow, create positive spaces. But I think what's just been said, and we recognise it in this year's youth awards as well, is the power and the value and, and the social action that our young people provide in Sheffield. Is much more broader than, than, um, we give it, um, credit and we, we are doing more to emphasise that.
Councillor Marouf?
Thank you for letting me come back. Um, yeah, I, I'm glad we're having this debate, to be honest with you. Because I think people out there listening will, will see that we do talk about these subjects, uh, very, uh, quite, quite a lot. And I think what you've said there, and I'm going to agree with you here councillor Dale, which is that there's a lot of myth building that's going on. Uh, when I was young, we used to play on the street, now playing on the street is construed to be gangs, gangs playing on the streets. Uh, and that's where I think we've lost it, and I think councillor Whitaker told, talked about it a little earlier on in the sixties and seventies. What, what people did in sixty, seventies and eighties is probably considered to be antisocial now, playing on the streets and, and, and playing cricket or football, et cetera. So I think it's incumbent upon us as, as members and as officers to get that message across, to say some of this is not really, it's just young people being young people. And, and, and I think some, what you've just said there, Chelsea, is quite important as well. You, you build this self-prophesy, don't you? That, that there's kids at the end of the street, they must have done something. And then somebody else tells somebody else, and with social media these days, it becomes a huge issue, which ends up on, on our doorsteps. And reality is, it may not well have been an issue, so it's more of an issue of allowing people to understand what's actually going on. So thank you for that and thank you for allowing the debate on this.
Thank you councillor Marouf. Oh, councillor Basra and then councillor Whitaker.
Yeah, um, again, I've, um, obviously hear similar stuff from parents, you know, the concerns. We've got to agree that there is, the times are different out there, it is harder for the young people. But I think, uh, when I first heard about this belonging framework, I felt really strongly that this work that you're doing. Um, putting together, and you know, what you've mentioned, joining up everybody from community, schools, uh, to home and parents and involving the young people. Because engaging with them is again about that early intervention, uh, and making them feel, you know, valued and supported. Because I think when that rough time happens, uh, within a family, whether it's to do with losing a job or a loved one. That's where I'm finding they are lost and often when they're needing that support, they either don't get it from home or from the community. But then, like it's mentioned, if they're hanging about, just, uh, grieving or doing something, they actually are seen as they're, uh, you know, for trouble. And then when you look at the other side, there's elderly people when they're trying to get to the shop and they see a group of lads. Which obviously both sides, you know, that vulnerability is there. But I think, um, once, this, this can tackle a lot of stuff, but I, I think the key thing here as well is. Once it's in there, that raising awareness, uh, out there widely is very important for everybody to feel that, you know, we're, we're all there. Working together to keep our young people safe, but I think this is something that we really need to push out there. But I think this is something that we really need to push out there because it's very much needed. Only recently I've, um, been speaking to a few young lads, lost their friend, uh, in a space of, uh, two weeks. Uh, but then graveyard, when you have those conversations, they're trying to actually seek employment. But when they try to reach out because of certain incident, they're labelled as not, you know, so they can't progress. But I think this is where we need to try to see how we can make sure that we can actually support them to thrive and get through those, uh, difficult times. And early intervention is always very key. So, yeah. I, I, I'm just really, really, this is important and at, coming at the right time and it's very much needed. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you councillor Basra. I will bring in councillor Whitaker, but you just, for me, made a, a part of your comment was, it's all our responsibility and all our eyes are open to this. So I think it is really important when we talk about safeguarding, exploitation and all of the risks, that people know that in Sheffield, we all are watching and we all are aware of it and we are all responsible for keeping our children safe. So what we want to do is create a, a safe city for our, uh, children and young people. So councillor Whitaker.
It's just some bit of information really. In, in the area that I live in, yes, we do have all this sort of, uh, behaviour that could be classed as antisocial behaviour, you know, a bit of vandalism in the park, groups hanging around and things like that. Um, but on the other hand, we do have some wonderful young people who volunteer their time in the community and do all sorts of volunteering roles. Uh, and we also have some intergenerational work going on, which is really superb. And that's at the, the local, um, secondary school. It's actually not in my ward, but it's where all the young people from my ward go to. Um, and, um, they do it three times a year, put an event on, um, for elderly people. And the, the interaction between, uh, I think it's perhaps year ten, uh, students, it is just absolutely lovely to see. And I always think that's where we do need to be thinking. We do have some wonderful young people. And all these sort of, um, strategies that we're bringing forward, the belonging strategy, safeguarding strategy. We'd hope that that would then make people who potentially are not going to be, who potentially might get into issues, um, go down the same track and then where we can be saying we're proud of them and they're wonderful young people.
Thank you councillor Whitaker. Yeah, that is, I mean, all our young people are wonderful young people, but some of them's opportunities are just different and their life experience is different. With this strategy in place, we'll be able to pick up before it's too late, to be able to put people back on track and support them, uh, to be, to feel like they belong and to feel like they're safe. So we just keep, it's really exciting stuff. I'm glad we've taken time on this because this is really the linchpin to everything that we're doing for children, young people. These two items today have been really, really important items. Uh, councillor Habey, you wanted to come back?
Yes, thank you. Um, quickly, I echo everybody's says Sheffield were quite lucky. Our young people are actually extremely ambitious. They do volunteer, they do want to help. So for us, it's just providing the tools, not convincing them because we already have that. One issue I wanted to raise is, um, as you may know, in the Communities Committee, the PSPL was just passed. Um, my colleague Marianne spoke about the potential issues that might cause, such as displacement of these issues into surrounding neighbourhoods like Brumhall, Kellam Island, Netheredge and Shara. And because of that, what elements have you looked at where that could start to affect our young people who are outside? You know, will they be, and we can confidently say based on plenty of research that a lot of young people will be, um, identified as causing ASB behaviour, may not be them specifically, it could be, um, a bunch of reasons. Um, and I won't go into it too much. But have you thought about this? Have you thought how that's going to affect our young people? Have you thought how this will be prevented? Have you spoken to, for example, police? Um, how would they go out into communities, um, and not misidentify young groups of people who do actually need our support because of this displacement that's happening in our areas?
Chelsea? So alongside, um, our universal youth services, we also have a contextual, um, safeguarding lead. Um, uh, and, and that's, that's two colleagues working within our provincial side of youth services. Um, working incredibly closely with, um, and delivering a lot of the, the examples I've, I've talked about today and looking and proactively looking at working with our community partners as opposed to us siloing and delivering ourselves. One of the, so there's, there's two strands to, to it, to the answer, which is firstly, we have worked, um, really closely with partners in the city, um, to engage young people who are and remain in the city. And that includes our CCTV team, our city ambassadors, the police, um, our bus, our local businesses in the area, um, to understand and recognise the differences in behaviour and actually, um, come to us and allow us to work with those young people as opposed to, um, what, what potential alternatives are, um, for, for those young people. And that includes creating a space within the city centre for young people to go to. Um, and that's been proactive for some time. Um, in terms of anything that then moves sort of further out or takes itself further out. Um, I think it's really important to recognise that over the last three years, we've really advanced our youth work offer. Um, we made a commitment to three youth clubs per ward and through our youth grants in partnership with our youth, our voluntary sector and also within the, as a deliverer of community youth services. Um, we, we have, um, just within what we fund and deliver, we have over eighty youth provisions a week being delivered. And we are seeing a significant increase in the number of young people accessing, um, youth work in different ways. Um, and that's, um, supported by a solid youth work curriculum. Uh, all elected members through their local area committees get a copy of the quarterly action plan from community youth services. So you can see what is coming up and how that is planned. And then additionally, we prepare for school holidays, dark nights, full dark nights programme. Um, and we are seeing better, stronger engagement, relational engagement with young people. Um, I take faith in that is the way that we, we handle this. We maintain and we're consistent in how we work with our young people and we prepare to offer them the curriculum that's based on the needs that they're bringing to us. And, and not to be too cliche, but in, in, in the context of youth work, we start where young people are at and they will bring that to us and we will respond, um, appropriately.
Just quickly, thank you for that, Chelsea. Um, I do appreciate your passion as well, how passionate you are about this work. Um, just a cheeky question, how many youth, what's our youth work trajectory looking like? Are we hiring more than before? Are we losing youth workers? Um, what's that looking like?
So our youth work, um, our youth work workforce in the council is significantly higher. Um, forgive me, I can get the figures to you. I couldn't, I couldn't give you a percentage right now. But to give you an example, we had three, uh, J and C qualified youth workers when I started back in twenty twenty-one. Um, when we in-sourced, we now have seven, one for each local area, uh, committee. Um, they then have their own team of level two and level three youth workers. We've delivered a training programme. It's, um, it's, it's not been without its challenges. Um, because the provider went through, um, some changes. Unfortunately, there was the passing of, of one of our colleagues, um, in the voluntary sector, so we needed to look at a different provider. We now have more assessors to be able to do in the city, currently being trained by Bursary to deliver the youth work qualification. And we have a relationship with Leeds Beckett University, um, to then look at a level six J and C qualified pathway. We're seeing more, um, alignment and collaboration with our voluntary sector. And we're seeing that with the Youth Alliance as well. Um, and, uh, we are, we are seeing more engagement through the youth grants and the funding that we apply to the local area committees. Um, which is roughly, um, just under four hundred thousand a year, going back into communities to deliver youth services. Um, which focuses on the needs of young people in those particular areas. And then on top of that, um, we have also started, um, looking at recruiting community-based volunteers, um, who don't necessarily want youth work as a career, but want to contribute, like what we've talked about before. Um, recognising young people as a positive contribution to their communities, having that adult and that trusted relationship. Um, and we've got a bank of volunteers who are now coming forwards, um, to deliver sessions of youth work as well.
Thanks, Chelsea. I mean, I would like to say that rebuilding youth service in Sheffield, um, has been, um, one heck of a task. Um, and, uh, same as across the country really. I think due to the, you know, years of lack of investment in community youth services and young people in general. You know, I've been, I sometimes speak to teenage young people and say, have you ever considered being a youth worker? And their response to me is, well, what's one of them? Because they've never had access to youth services, as in traditional style youth clubs and that kind of thing. So what we're trying to do now is recreate, uh, and encourage people to get involved in something that there's been a bit of a gap in anybody even understanding what, what youth work is. So the work that is ongoing, I know I work in one of the communities where, where this is all happening. And it's really exciting actually, when you've got actual parents of teenagers who are like, I'll get involved, I'll come and I'll run things. And that's kind of the route, isn't it? That's where we need those, uh, really strong individuals in communities to help us with that. So thank you for all that work, Chelsea. That's really good. So has anybody got any more questions? Uh, councillor Banister?
Yeah, just a couple of small ones. Um, going back to, um, the exclusions. Uh, obviously it's usually seen as disruptive or negative behaviour that causes these exclusions. Um, but with SEN, it's also quite often can't meet need. So I was just wondering if we have the data on that as to how many, because obviously we've got a ramping up of SEN exclusions. And that's obviously more around a provision rather than, yes, when the kids have done. And, uh, there's talk of, uh, autumn style youth club. Um, I was just wondering if you've been working with ACT, who've been doing a very similar thing at St Mary's Church for as long as I can remember, to be honest.
Sally, did you, Sally, did you just want to come in on one element of that?
Um, in terms of the, the, your, your questions about exclusion in SEN, um, I think it's something that, um, we have got coming to committee, we've got a knowledge briefing coming up because I think a short answer from yourself, Pat, would potentially do it a little bit of a disservice. Um, and so, I mean, that would be my suggestion about moving forward, um, with that. And then just sort of a slight answer to your second question. I think listening to a lot of questions and comments, it's really clear that we need to look at a separate knowledge briefing specifically around community youth services. Um, so one about people understanding, um, what happens in community youth services, what, what's been going on. But also it's about that, you, you've all been equipped with that information when you're talking to constituents as well about what the offer is in local communities.
Thank you. You, you stole my role, so that's on my list, to do that. Pat, did you, did you want to come in?
I'd just agree with Sally. I don't think I can give a concise, concise response to your first question. Apart from a very concise, is which an exclusion is not meeting needs. So by default, the answer to your question is, is not, the need is not met. We're not defining how that's apportioned or blamed or anything like that. It's just, it, it is a need not being met if you're excluded from your school.
Thank you. Chelsea on the ACT one, yeah?
Um, so in relation to ACT, um, I understand from the provider that they have engaged with or contacted, um, a number of provisions across the city. Um, I, I want to say yes. I'm not, I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying out the caveat of I'm going to go back and find out. Um, but also we, uh, funny enough, had a conversation before Christmas about, um, doing a, um, a launch of, um, sort of Spectrum Gaming we're working with. Um, and doing, doing a sort of, a bit of a launch and a demonstration to providers, to parents, to Senkos. Um, and, and, and other sorts of contacts and professionals. So if we haven't, it's certainly, um, in the pipeline to do.
Thanks, Chelsea. So if we can just have it noted that we want a specific briefing with regards to a lot of, uh, exclusions, which is coming anyway. And, um, and, and an update on what's happening over, which we have had, but it feels like a while ago, what's happening in community, uh, youth service across the city. So on that note then, um, we have been asked, the recommendation is to approve the development of the community safeguarding strategy. I would just like to reiterate that in considering the approval of this strategy, we must recognise that it sets out a comprehensive proactive approach in addressing the evolving and external risks faced by children and young people in Sheffield and ensures a coordinated response across communities, services and agencies to prevent harm. Apologies, I pressed mute. Oh gosh. Uh, in Sheffield and ensures a coordinated response across communities, services and agencies to prevent harm. It was a crucial step in protecting and supporting Sheffield's children. And I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank everyone who's worked on this so far. But I'm looking forward to working with partners when we start to integrate this policy, uh, across the city. So are we all, uh, in agreement to approve the development of this strategy? Thank you. That's a yes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, everyone. Interesting conversations today. Really good stuff. Thank you. So next item is item number eight. Does anybody want to just take a quick comfort break? Some minds thought some of you were really cold. So can we just take a five minute, four minute, I'll give four minutes, comfort break? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We just took a few minute comfort break there for members in the chamber. Um, so now we are moving on to agenda item number eight, which is our special educational needs and disabilities and alternative provision self-evaluation framework, or CEF, for those in the know. Uh, and presenting today is, uh, Rose Ward and Pat Buttrall. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Um, it's like, this is the opposite of being on teams, isn't it? So as councillor Dale's just said, the special educational needs and disability, excuse me, and, uh, alternative provision self-evaluation form. It was actually due for review in February and we've pushed the review forward so we can get the next iteration into the committee today. Um, so, and that's a bit of an explanation about why the, the form came later. So you had the form too and then you had the CEF document. So apologies for its lateness. Um, so just a little bit by way of background. So there was, we still call it a new framework, but it's now actually two years ago that Ofsted and CQC released the new framework. Um, so it was January twenty twenty-three. And what that meant was that we saw a significant move away from inspecting areas as to how they coped with the reforms of twenty fourteen into inspecting areas, and quite rightly so, on the experiences of young people with special educational needs and those who are accessing alternative provision, what their out, what their life outcomes were. So thinking about their post sixteen, their entry to employment and whether they have positive experience of the education, health and care system. So the framework outlines twelve areas that we need to be evaluating our activity and effectiveness. And like I say, this is very much across education, health and care. And I do just want to make the point, given the last, um, items that we, we've, uh, heard, that when we say care, we don't just mean social care, we also mean communities. So that includes friendships and, uh, so it's more broad than just social care needs. Um, and in Sheffield, what we've also done within our self-evaluation is we've added a thirteenth area because we felt the areas outlined by, uh, Ofsted and CQC didn't go far enough into our children's access to education. So we've added a thirteenth area because as again has been highlighted through the conversations this afternoon, we know that there are too many of our children who don't have access to a full-time education in a formal educational establishment. So we've, we've outlined that in our thirteenth area. And, um, just to also highlight, and this is not linked to the, the CEF, but an important thing for people to know. Um, it has just been announced that the themed inspection, um, from Ofsted and CQC will be about children who are not in receipt of a full-time education. So we're really quite pleased that we thought about adding this thirteenth area because that gives then strength if we are called upon to be an area who are, who, who take part in that themed inspection. So the inspection framework, um, is, as I've talked about, it, it's a partnership evaluation. It's about our systems response and it covers the broad spectrum of, of education, health and care. And it has, it is new that it now includes alternative provision. Just to be clear on alternative provision, we've got a lot of alternative provision in our city. It usually follows an engagement, uh, route. When we're talking about alternative provision in this inspection framework, they're talking about registered alternative provision, which means our inclusion centre for children who are excluded from school and our chapel house provision which sits under Beckton, which is our provision for children who are too poorly to attend school. So when we talk about AP in this sense, it is those two very specific offers, not the broader engagement offer. Um, so just to highlight the timelines, like I said, the review of this, uh, self-evaluation was during, in February. We have expedited that to make sure that we could have it here today for, for your, uh, uh, comment and questions. Uh, we will have, this is an iterative process. So next versions of the CEF can also flow through the committee as well. Uh, we know that we need to keep pace with what's happening in the area. And I think councillor Dale, you did acknowledge when we spoke about this, that we are, there's a lot of work happening in this space. So there will be a lot of iterations of the CEF because we, we need this to keep pace with the areas of development as well. Because it should be describing, um, the analysis and the evaluation of all of the activities that we are undertaking, which are many. Um, and we know that we've got, um, our partners at Learn Sheffield, who are, who are working across the partnership to develop the Send manifesto. And we've talked about that a little bit this afternoon, the Belonging Framework. And we've also got a review of alternative provision that will then all play into what we're articulating through our self-evaluation. I won't go through loads of detail in terms of what's, what's in the CEF section by section, but I did just want- but I did just want to pull out some key points in terms of the strengths that we've identified. And I think we've seen some examples of that again this afternoon with the way that, you know, our children's services talk about our children and young people and the passion that we hold. And we know that we have a strength in our child-centred approach, and that we focus on the wellbeing of our children. We know that we've got a growing partnership in this place, so it's a maturing partnership across the education, health and care landscape. We're reaching out to our voluntary and community sectors to make sure that we're focused on improving outcomes for our young people. We've had a real focus on our data, because our data is our children. And we're beginning to use our data in a much better way than we were before, so we can help to focus our resource on what our young people need from us. And there are lots of, as we've talked about, lots of support activities that are happening around our children and young people and their families when there's special educational needs. We also acknowledge that there's many development areas needed in this space. So we know that we need to work better together, so we need to make sure that we are continually working around the outcomes for children and young people right the way across the system, and that we are focused on the impacts and not the activity that we undertake. We want to make sure that we've got a really clear focus on early years, so that enables us to identify needs at the earliest opportunity, getting early, and then that also allows children to thrive and achieve their outcomes through the best start in life. We want early help services that work together to provide that early help that meets needs as early as possible and has a positive impact. And we need to focus on meeting need, because we have at the moment very high levels of children moving through assessment, which can be very, very important to be able to understand needs. But this is about meeting need and not always on that specialised assessment. And we know that we are continually working on inclusive education. And we are, you know, very lucky to have schools, so predominantly in Sheffield schools are rated by Ofsted Good or Outstanding, and that gives us a really good start in terms of having that inclusive education system. But we also need to look beyond the traditional curriculum and think about alternative curriculum, not just alternative provision. We've highlighted through the SEF as well that this is about always looking at where we can improve. So we are never happy just to coast, we're not happy with business as usual and just saying that's okay. It has to be a continual improvement that we are taking. We need to be transformative in how we deliver services for children with special educational needs and those in alternative provision. And we'll achieve that by working together. So we wanted to highlight those two specific things to say we are not happy with the status quo. There are some key activities that we've highlighted, so one of them that you've heard this afternoon around the Belonging Framework. So we will continue to embed that as a framework in which we all operate. We have the SEND manifesto that I've just mentioned that's in development, and then that will help us to shape this self-evaluation, but also the children's services target operating model, so we'd have a better understanding of what our children need from us. There is a sufficiency issue around therapy services, so we know we've got children who wait a long time for therapy services. So there is a current assessment of capacity happening there and thinking about the funding arrangements for our therapy services to make sure our children don't wait too long for that support. We know mental health support, again, we need to reduce those waiting times. And there is a lot happening around building mental health support teams in our schools, so our children have access where they attend their school. The autism and ADHD support, we're developing multi-agency support teams that will work through localities to help to understand the needs of the children who may be on waiting lists, who are going through that assessment pathway. But understanding the need and the support they require, it doesn't necessarily mean that they need to have that assessment in order to access the support. We've got to keep a clear focus on preparation for adulthood and focus on those smooth transitions onwards into the post-16, and making sure that we're focusing on independence, and then that brings in the elements of independent travel, which I know that you've all been very supportive of. We've got to focus on community inclusion, we know that our children only spend 15% of their lives in education, so that we need to have that community inclusion. And going back to what we were talking about earlier, in terms of helping our children to be safe in their communities, we've talked about having things like communication boards in parks, because the predominant need when our children are suspended or excluded from school is actually speech, language, communication needs and developmental language delay. So to be able to communicate not only in your school but in your community is really important. We need to focus on integrated commissioning and finalise what we call a joint strategic needs assessment, which is looking at the needs of your community, and then again, making sure that you've got the right services to respond to those needs. But localising that provision, because it's not the same across a very big city, and we know that we're split into wards, districts, localities, so it's how do we make sure that that's right for our communities? And then we need to focus on audit and quality assurance to make sure that we're asking those continual questions of are we doing the right thing and are we making the right impact? So just in terms of shaping the SEF, which hopefully you've all had opportunity to have a look through, we have made it, we've strengthened the SEF in this iteration of it by really utilising the voice of our children, the voice of our parents and carers, and then working through the data to help say what we are doing to address the feedback and the data. We know that the next iterations will mature into that space, and like I say, we'll focus on the impact. And we need to be clearer, I think, through this next iteration on what are we prioritising within our commitments? Thank you.
Thank you Rose. Any questions on the SEF or any comments? I've just got one question, written it down, so I didn't forget. And I think I might have asked somebody this and I don't think we could remember. But when are we next due on inspection? And do you feel that we've made sufficient progress since the last one?
Okay, it's the eternal question, isn't it, about when are we going to be inspected? So there is, there's no real way to determine when you're going to be inspected. I wouldn't be surprised if we're part of the themed inspection that I mentioned, because we are, we do have, as has been highlighted, high levels of children who are not in full-time education. So I wouldn't be surprised if we're targeted for that. I mean, we had a conversation just a few days ago about when we thought we might be due an inspection, and it's like, you know, we know that our other areas in South Yorkshire have all now been inspected. I think so we are the last remaining South Yorkshire authority who hasn't been inspected. So that's one just to take note of. And in terms of our journey from last inspection, we last had an inspection in 2018, which feels like an eternity ago. And I think what got highlighted in the 2018 inspection in that report were things that we are still battling and tackling today. However, that's not unusual, because the things that we are finding challenging, that our children are finding challenging, that our families are finding challenging, are national issues. So we are not an outlier in the sense of with the challenges that we see. So every area has issues with inclusion, with exclusion, and with helping our children with special educational needs to feel that sense of belonging. So we are not an outlier in that sense. Thank you, Pat.
I'm just going to add to that, that although this tool is extremely useful, in fact it's crucial for inspection, this is not just about inspection, self-evaluation is about self-evaluation and understanding your journey and transformation journey. So regardless of inspection times, and genuinely, we don't know, we've got a sweepstake in the office, but we still wouldn't find out, I think it's crucial that self-evaluation forms part of your own kind of working agenda, your own understanding of yourself and a wider understanding of the SEND system as well. So it's crucial that we do this work regardless of where we are in inspections cycle.
Thank you. Just one last question for me about the SEND manifesto. I know that, having met with Stephen at Learn Sheffield, will this be coming to committee? Because it doesn't appear to be on work programme, so would we be able to get that when it's completed, but be able to have sight of it at committee?
I think, I'm trying to channel my Nick Whitaker, who's leading the work on the SEND manifesto, and completed, I think Nick would say this, it will not be a completed exercise for regeneration, because iterating some of the work and developing some of the work is a long-term proposal. However, there will be pieces of work that will be presentable to the group as well.
Sorry, we were just having a question because it's Learn Sheffield's manifesto, but Learn Sheffield do sometimes come and just give us an update about the work that they're doing, so whether or not we could just include it in an update when Learn Sheffield come. I think that would be helpful. I mean, they're doing lots of great stuff, and you know, they did come last year, I think it were, and give us an update about the services that are provided, and I think this could be one element of that, just so people are. SEND manifesto sounds like, well, what is that? People want to know what it is and what it looks like, and where's it, where do, once it's done, where does it go and who are we working with on it? It's obviously going to be a working document.
I think an explanation of the SEND manifesto, when it develops into something further, I think it was certainly part of a knowledge briefing would be useful initially. And then as part of the Learn Sheffield Commission, we do come to this committee as well, so that it could be explained further at that point as well.
That's great, thank you. councillor Basra, did you have your hand up?
I think it probably ties in somewhere, just asking a question in terms of, you know, does the children that are not in school due to, you know, the school spaces being too far or whatever, they're doing homeschooling or after school because of that reason, does this also take into consideration of those children as well?
So if they've got special educational needs, then yes. But if it's through mainstream admissions we're talking about, then no, this SEF wouldn't cover those children. And nor would the themed inspection that I've mentioned. However, we do have a response to children who are not in full-time education. So we know all of our children who are electively home-educated, we know those who are on educational other than at school packages. So, and we know those who are children missing education or waiting for a mainstream placement through admissions. So we track all of our children and know where they are in the city, and those who are waiting a placement or can't access their placement.
Thank you Rose. Any other questions or comments on this one? No? Well, thank you for that Rose and Pat. So this paper is for noting the recommendations that we noticed, the overview of the SEND and Alternative Provision Area SEF and expected dates. Note the last inspection occurred in 2018 and not have yet been inspected under the new framework of 2023. And note that the local area SEND partnership continues to use Annex A lists one and two, so that a local area, we define our priorities using the data to respond to the needs of children and young people. Annex A sets out the information that inspectors request when they notify the local area partnership of an area SEND full inspection. It also sets out the information that the inspectors will request to assist them in selecting children and young people's cases for tracking, and for further information, they will request about those selected. Do we all agree to note that? Thank you, that's agreed, thank you. So our next and final paper for today is agenda item number nine on page 77, and that is the Children and Families SEF, and it's, I believe it's Sally who will be giving us an update on that, thanks Sally.
Thank you. So our Children and Families SEF falls on quite well to the SEND SEF, so it is our self-evaluation document. And just following on from a comment that Pat made earlier, it's really important about us showing that we know ourselves, what work we're doing, what improvements we're doing. And we're not doing that to be Ofsted-ready, we're doing that because it's about the services for children and families in Sheffield. And so I think it's just important in that context to note that that's why we're doing this. So I think if people have had opportunities to read through SEF, it is quite self-explanatory, just to start to finish in terms of children's services. So it is a document that is continually updated. We use this as a basis for our annual conversation, which is an annual engagement meeting that we have each year with Ofsted. And that's about being able to review information that we have around Sheffield, work that we're doing, and our plans for the future. And that leads on to then looking at what the next inspection activity is going to be for the city. So as you know, from last committee, we recently had a focused visit. And then in 2023 was our last standard inspection in the ILAC framework. So as we're going through, it is just an overview of where we are in children's services within Sheffield, any alignments with comparative data such as national core cities and regional data, and being able to benchmark where we are. But also identifying where we've got the areas for improvements and, for example, changes in data, that we understand what the reasoning for that is. As you can see, throughout, we've got plans for what we want to do for the next 12 months. But just to mention that over the last few weeks, with changes to the national framework and looking at different ways, working with the National Aid and the DFE about changes to children's social care. Although we'll be carrying on with what our intentions were, it is a really exciting time for children's services at the moment and all the developments. So these are going to be a lot of activities, and I think every time I speak, I mention another knowledge briefing today. So I think we're doing another knowledge briefing in terms of those changes and family help model. So.
Thanks Sally, I know we all attend a lot of meetings, but as Sally said, a lot is changing and at pace within children's services. There's lots of new exciting legislation coming from government, and I think we all need to be very well-versed and understand that when we're making decisions. And it will be good news for some of our children and young people in this city. You've pinched my line again, by the way, I've written there that the SEF is important about to know ourselves and all that, so anyway, I won't be iterating that. I don't have any questions myself, does anyone else have any question? Not for this meeting anyway, I've got some for other meetings, thank you. Any questions or comments on the SEF? No? Well, I would just like again to thank everyone who does this on a daily basis. We get to talk about it regularly, briefings, but this is, you know, our staff's bread and butter, and this is what is really important to our children. So thank you everybody for all the work that you do on this, and we do appreciate that. So we've just got one recommendation for noting on this paper, and that's to note the overview of the Children and Families SEF Evaluation Framework and updates provided. Are we all happy to note that? Thank you very much, and that's it. Thank you all very much for coming to this extraordinary meeting, and we'll see you all on the 4th of February at two o'clock. So see you in a few weeks, thank you very much.